Right, because personally, right? Because I don't see things at all.
Welcome, everybody. This is a continuation of the Select Board meeting at six thirty where we'll be holding our, our public hearings. But first, we will open this portion as per usual with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, two to five of the United States of America. And to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great. Roll call, Dave Hamlin, Chair of the Select Board.
Marlo Herrick.
John Clark.
All right.
Saying I showed up.
Moving on to our meeting rules and procedures, I believe everybody here is familiar. We try to keep it fairly easy, so we follow the classroom style. Please raise your hand at any point in time during any of the topics. And just don't shout out and interrupt each other, and we'll be fine. Moving on to announcements. There is one that I want to make. And it is actually not our announcement. It is from the Division of Forests and Lands and the Governor. They signed a proclamation prohibiting open fires and smoking in and near woodlands. And so this is basically any open fire. Fire permits can't even be gotten at this point in time. The only way that you can possibly do any is a category one fire with a permit in a specified campground that holds permits and has been inspected to do so. So that is a New Hampshire-wide thing, so no fires. We don't want forest fires here. With that being said, do we have further announcements?
I have a couple of announcements, and it's my same old one that I do every time, and eventually it'll be done. The bridge project is moving along as expected. The forms on the deck were removed on the sixteenth of this month. There was a crack that was noticed in the slab and the hollow area at one end of the abutment size, and Cold River is addressing that. What Wright Pierce is working on, pay application number seven for Cold River, which I do not have yet. I did speak with New Hampshire DOT on Friday, and they advised me that reimbursements five, six, and seven have been approved for a total of a million, two hundred, four thousand, seven oh eight sixty-five, and the order's been forwarded to the State Treasurer's Office. And that usually takes two to three weeks before we, before we see that money, which was good news. The bridge, a picture of the bridge will be featured in Wright Pierce's 2026 calendar. So that would be nice. The budget process begins at the next board meeting on October sixth. And finally, John Clark and I met with the Chair of the Hockington Select Board and the Town Administrator to discuss an issue regarding the ambulance billing, which I would like to speak with you tonight, and I thought I would sneak it in before correspondence, if I could.
Sounds good. Do we have any further announcements? Any announcements from, all right. All right.
Other than the state has, the Governor has a, and you.
Right, got it.
Okay, thank you. Just you there.
All right. So thank you very much, everybody. And that will move us to our first public hearing, which is on the accepting a grant in excess of ten thousand for Closed Pen Bridge. We have already accepted the grants for the bridge, but because of the change in making that now a hundred percent instead of the eighty percent that was originally expected, it has been advised by legal that we hold another public hearing to accept the full grant for the bridge. So that is what we're doing. So I'll go ahead and open this public hearing at six thirty-five, and take it away.
Right. Well, the reason is, the town approved back in the nineties, allowing the Select Board to accept grants for the town without having to go to town meeting every time. However, if the grant is greater than ten thousand dollars, it does require a public hearing, and I didn't know that. And this, this hearing is to correct that. And of course, the bridge grant is much larger than ten thousand dollars.
So would anybody like to say that we should or should not accept the money? I think we should accept free money, but the public hearing is open.
I'd say ask for an extra dollar, make it ten thousand, one dollar.
It's way over ten thousand.
I think the town should accept the money.
Oh, yeah.
Take it.
All right. Any further public comment before we close the, the public hearing on this matter?
You guys are doing a great job with the bridge. Thank you.
It does look good. We're not able to really take too much credit for it. They're, they're doing the construction, but it is fun to see that it is progressing.
If it was going badly, we don't know anything about it.
Right. What bridge?
All right. Seeing no further public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion at six thirty-seven. Do we need a motion on that, I believe, or no?
I don't believe you need, you've held it. You've held the public hearing.
You know what? I will move to reaffirm our commitment to the acceptance of all of the grants for the bridge.
Probably good.
I second that.
All in favor.
Aye.
That was easy.
All right. That moves us on to our second public hearing, which is titled on our agenda, tax anticipation note for Closed Pen Bridge. And a brief explanation, then I'll let Dana take it away. You've heard a little bit of it previously. We do have a number of payments that go out to the bridge, and there is a lag for when we get paid back from the state. And so I will let Dana, actually, I will open the public hearing for that at six thirty-eight, and turn it over to Dana.
Well, this is to also satisfy the law that, and again, the town has given the board permission to put out tax anticipation notes if needed. And it hasn't for as long as up in here and probably many years prior to that. But it is a requirement that a public hearing is had, is done, have, whatever.
Held, yeah.
When, held, thank you. It's terrible when the mind goes. But anyway, that a public hearing is held when you're taking a tax anticipation note, which is what we're calling this borrowing, which we hope we don't have to use. But that's the reason for this public hearing, is to satisfy that. We have come a little close in the cash flow, but it's looking a little brighter now. And I'm hoping we don't have to do anything, but in the event we do, the Treasurer, Therese, and I want to be ready to move and not have to put close signs with the town.
Well, I would, I think I'd like to say, kudos to you guys for paying that close attention. Not that you shouldn't be. A lot of people think all the money's gonna come, and to be without money for even two days is enough to cause it. And, and it seems like it's kind of a very, very cheap way of doing it, and I, I personally appreciate it.
This is a very unusual town that does not borrow money. And, and, and I love that, because I hate paying interest myself, so.
No, and it should be noted more. I don't think a lot of people understand that.
Yeah, yeah. And many towns, many towns that I've worked for, I mean, it's just a way they do business.
That's right.
To try and make sure that everybody has some facts and figures, I believe you had mentioned that it was basically to be a million-dollar line of credit with a five percent annual comp, but done daily interest rate on it.
Yes.
If needed.
Yes, our, our, our plan would be, if we needed the money, Therese would ask how much for what we needed. And as soon as we had the money come back from the reimbursement, she would pay it back. So the five percent would be in effect from the time we borrowed the money till the time we pay it back. And we hope that would be just as.
Yeah, it'd be very minimal unless the state blew up or something.
Would you like to say anything further on that before we open to public comment?
No, I'm, I'm pretty confident. And it just, we're, we've got everything in place except for one document, but they're going to submit everything we have. The representative from the banks coming in tomorrow to pick up some stuff and send it over to the credit office, so.
We, we don't feel there's any problem with us being able to borrow the money.
Yeah, so, so this is with longstanding bank relationship? And the, this is the belt and suspenders approach? Hopefully, we don't actually use it, but in case it is needed for that temporary, if the state is slower than expected for paying us back. And that's what that covers. Are there any comments or questions?
Great.
All right. Seeing no further public comment or people walking in, close the public hearing portion at six forty-two. And what, do we need a motion on this, or was it okay from the last time?
Well, I like what you did in the last public hearing, was just have a, you know, kind of a wrap-up motion.
So I would move to reaffirm after the public hearing that we wish to move forward with the possibility of the tax anticipation note, as previously discussed.
Who will second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that moves us on to old business. First of which listed is the IT services quote.
So I reached out to the recommendations from Armon, and I included a letter from, I think it was Osiphe.
Yes.
And how they responded, they could not speak more highly of the company. I asked them pretty much two questions. I wanted to know if they actually did what they said when they came to meeting with the town and discussing the town's needs and were on top of budgeting. The town on Osiphe said they met monthly with Armon in the beginning, and then decided later on, because you just didn't have time to meet with them monthly, that they would meet quarterly instead. And then I also spoke to him about how they responded to a cyber incident, and he said they were very pleased with earlier in the year, they had had an incident where somebody hacked their computers. Armon was on the site on Saturday when the attack happened, within an hour, and had the whole thing wrapped up by the end of the weekend. So they do, so when they say they do the twenty-four-hour monitoring, they do. It's twenty-four-hour monitoring, seven days a week, and they handled it perfectly. And then I heard from Newington today. She called me back, and I was able to have the same thing. They followed through. They fortunately hadn't had a cyber incident, because I asked the same two questions. But they were also very pleased with the services and did quarterly meetings with them to ask about their needs. And they also, she also stated that since their town's larger, Armon actively works with each of the department heads to get the information they need and meets regularly with them for their needs. So they're a very attentive company, which is one of the things we strongly desire.
Definitely.
So I just, I think we're just looking for a direction of the board, if the board wants to move with Armon.
So my question here, which I know I, we talked about at previous meeting, but I can't remember. How does that fit into the budget compared to current IT company? Is this something that we can actually just switch over? Or do we need to worry about an overage in the line and, or something similar?
I think, I think it's, this is a little more expensive service than what we've had in the past. However, I think that the budget, we can sustain there in this budget.
And it, now is that, when you say a little bit more expensive, are you just talking about the monthly payments or the overall? Because currently, we have a fairly low monthly payment, but we pay for everything.
Well, it's the overall I'm talking about.
Okay.
And, and maybe it's not as expensive as what you might think, because you don't see it all at once with our current company, because you have several bills that make up, and things that I think we won't have anymore as far as paying for all these software licenses and everything else that we have to do. But I think the budget, the current budget we have.
We'll still be paying for software licenses.
Well, in a different way, I guess is what, perhaps, you know?
So what you're saying, Ian, is you're highly recommending we move in that direction?
I think that, I think we're at a point, we do need another vendor.
Yeah.
I think that this vendor did a very good presentation. The other vendor that Russ had spoken with and we got a quote, it wasn't nearly as professional as this one.
I'm not, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm not knowledgeable with Osiphe, but I am very knowledgeable with the administration in mind. And I'll be very frank with you, if they're, if they're saying, I trust you completely if they're saying what they're saying, definitely will, should be a good company to move.
Well, I think we got a good vibe, too.
Mm-hmm.
We got a good vibe.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, their, their interview per se, and the presentation was really good. And so knowing that they're actually doing what they're saying they're doing is the important part, and we really wanted to make sure.
Oh, it's good to reach out.
So as long as it's within the budget, I see no reason not to move forward with this. Is that just a concurrence from the board, or do you need a motion?
I think it would be good to have a motion.
Can I make a motion? I move that we move forward as we have discussed with the IT company, Armon, as that was pronounced correctly. And follow through the contract that we discussed with them and pursue it.
So.
And this won't happen instantly, it'll probably happen within the next two months, because we have to close out their current provider and get a contract with Armon in place.
One caveat, but I'd like to see, the IT person here, I'd like to see the first three months we can have enough of me. After that, we push it out to, just to get everybody up online.
Well, one of the things they said, then they come in, they have an extensive onboarding session, so I think they are gonna be with us regularly and be around, just so they can get all the equipment.
Just to get a good feel of, I think, his team.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would definitely agree with, meeting as often as they want to and think would be beneficial. And the same with the office staff.
Yeah.
At least as we start.
And we can see if they can come to board meeting, at least one board meeting again, kind of give you guys an update on the onboarding might be useful to them.
Yeah, I would say near the end of.
Yeah, near the end of the onboarding.
Unless there's an issue that we need to track at, I think would make a lot of sense. And then we should probably add them to one of the budgetary ones, and actually have them come in so that they can present about server replacements and, and the, the life cycle of the various equipment and stuff, because I know that they actually do that. Or at least they said they were doing that, whereas we've been asking for that from the previous company.
I'm very anxious to have that.
So I think we should definitely get them in on the budget schedule for that.
All right. And we will, Russ and I will work out with them the best way for the conversion.
So we had the motion and the second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything further or any other comments? Okay. That moves us to our other old business, which is the website quote.
So I went, and you asked me to sort of compare their services that they included in their contract, so I did. So you could see them lined up. The top is Revise and what they provide, and the bottom is Civic Plus and what they provide. And the costs are on the top and on the bottom. So you can see it right next to them, what the annual cost would be. Underneath it's what services are provided. And I will note, and I think it's pretty obvious from the charts, that one of the companies provides a larger slew of services. However, caveat there, I'm not sure how the website works on the backend, so I don't know how many of these are just over glorified. You know what I'm talking about, where they're.
It's a checkbox versus working well.
It's working, whether, it's something that you can use versus whether it's something that's actually easy to use and understand and is equivalent. Because a lot of the stuff that Civic Plus has, like the social media integration, I've never seen that on our website. We're supposed to have that currently.
I, I was just about to say, like Civic Plus is our current website.
Yeah.
And it does a lot of things as a checkbox and practically doesn't.
Yeah, because, for example, the web forums, I have tried to get the web forums to work on the website. I have incredibly difficult, and I, and I've used other Civic Plus websites where the, the web forums are not hard to use. This one particularly is hard to use. So I just wanted to point that out.
What is the current annual amount that's paid for the website?
So this will be the new annual.
Right, but what is the current amount that we?
I believe it's somewhere around three grand.
Thirty-two hundred.
But if we stay in the Civic Plus, it goes up to that amount, because they have to upgrade. It's going to add.
Yeah, so that would go up to ninety-two hundred.
Ninety-two hundred.
Yep.
Averaging. The.
And then I found out in the contract, it's also subject to five percent raises every year.
The other website company, Revise, theirs was an annual cost of two thousand plus four thousand to set it up, or three thousand for a four-year contract.
Now, one of the things about, about that four thousand dollars to set up, I want to put a caveat there, they briefly looked at our website. It wasn't a full look, so it might be more expensive than that. I just wanted to put that out there, because it depends on how much we want to transfer over from the old site to the new site, depends on how much it's gonna cost. And there are some things that I would like to keep up there. For example, Select Board minutes, Planning Board minutes, and ZBA minutes.
And emergency notification.
Yeah, well, yeah, they have it built in, but I don't think it's the same level of emergency notification as you would get, because, pardon me if I'm wrong, Evan might know more, or you might know more. I think the way that a more standard emergency notification works is it goes to every cell phone in the area. Theirs is a sign-up, so we would have to do like a campaign on the sign for the public safety setting and a public campaign to get people to register on the website for the emergency notification.
Which you would with any community, but.
Right.
And we could have like a sign there, like, and maybe a QR code for anyone that's walking in at the clerk's.
Correct.
To sign up.
I'm saying there would be an easier way to, but it wouldn't be as all-inclusive as, say, the bigger.
It's redundancy on top of reverse nine-one-one.
Yeah, it's not.
Right.
It's not.
So.
And I am interested to see how some of these other tools work, such as the online survey tools, I think would be very useful. I think that's pretty much the big one. And the online payment portal, I'm not sure how that one would work. I want to look at that one, too.
The, I guess the quote, so there's two questions. One, which I think has an obvious answer, which is, which way do we want to go as far as the two companies?
I also want to mention, the vendor from Revise said he was also willing to come to a board meeting. It would have to be virtual, because he's in Florida, but he would be willing to dial in and run you through the proposal if you wanted to hear it yourselves.
And the second question, if we were to go with Revise, which is the by-far-less-expensive option and the one that's offering a whole lot more services with the, with the site, would we want to do the two-a-year-plus setup or the four-year contract at three? My thoughts there are normally I like to pay upfront and be done and have the lower payments going forward. But also, the contracts, especially for tech stuff, tend to go up over time. So the longer we can lock them in, knowing that we're not paying, and they're not factoring in additional money to, for us to spread the payments out, so we're essentially saving on whatever the interest amount is over the four years. So the three thousand per year for a four-year lock-in contract would be a lot smarter, in my opinion. But I'd love to hear any other questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, I think when it comes to IT, sincerely, you're the guy and the person, and I think you've given us a pretty good direction on it. And again, if we can save money and go with that, I mean, I'm looking at the, the.
Right, it kind of looks weak, looks lopsided.
Yeah.
Very.
So that just gives you the willies to begin with.
Right.
And, you know, to the credit of Russ for, for going and doing this, and also that, like Civic Plus was basically told by the government, not us, you have to go do all of this, because you need to meet all of these newer ADA guidelines. And when they contacted us, it was, oh, well, we have to do this, so we're going to. It wasn't, oh, and your annual cost is gonna triple.
No, they never said that until this year.
So, and they also haven't done it and have been expected to do it.
They were supposed to do it last year.
Right. So all of those factors, I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with the new company, as much of a pain as that may be and how the website will look different. But I don't think.
Now, does the board want to talk?
Knowing, knowing what I do about trying to navigate and/or create things on our current website, it's not like it's easy for most people to work their way through and find what they want anyway. So I don't think we're going to lose out in any regard there.
Well, my, do you want to meet with a contractor for this company before you make the, the decision?
Contractor for which?
Revise. Do you want to meet with the?
Where's Revise at? Is this someone out of Florida you're talking to?
Well, the employees in Florida, I'm not sure where the company's at, but they're like Civic Plus itself. It's a countrywide. I think they're Colorado, I think is where the company's based. These are, they're New Hampshire-based. These are more general.
See my point, right?
You know?
I, I mean.
They do have several New Hampshire communities.
They do.
Do they?
And I did try to get ahold of several of them.
Sounds like a question, I'm asking, just ask.
Because I wanted to kind of get the impression of what they felt about Revise.
When you looked at the other places on their websites, did they seem similar? Did they seem easier or?
They seemed similar to, to our website currently. I didn't see anything that was way out of the range. I think with the Revise websites, they presented better than the Civic Plus websites. But as far as I'm concerned, that's like the biggest difference, like you do from a surface glance, was just one looks a little bit more professional than the other one. But then again, with the Civic Plus website, everybody's Civic Plus website looks exactly the same.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, that's the only, when I look at it, that's the only thing, it's like always like, because you can go to some websites that are harder than Civic.
Yeah, and that's one of those things that, when we're rebuilding the website, I know there's certain people that have had trouble navigating, and I would like to bring them in when we're building the new website and have them look at it, because I think that would be the time to do it.
Who manages it now? Dave and/or you?
I'm the one currently manages most of the pages on the website. For example, the PD manages their own page, and there's other people who manage their own pages.
And Russ is the overall site admin. And then, for example, when we were actively doing the, the solar project and the solar committee, I was in charge of the solar committee section of the site and updating that. The. I think it would probably make sense to request that they come in for the meeting so that we and anybody else can ask questions of them, but also so that they can present what the process and timeline might look like and how that would happen before we make a final decision.
The one deadline we have is that we have to make the decision, I think it's by December, because we have to notify Civic Plus if we're leaving them. It's in the contract sixty days in advance. And we can only do this, which is before the renewal date, which I think is February, late February. So we want to make sure.
But I think you have enough time to have.
I do, I just want to make sure the board, the board know that we do it before we're planning to move in that direction.
Before our brains freeze in December.
Yeah, before our brains freeze and we get stuck in Christmas time and holidays.
How soon can you set this up?
I can talk to, I think his name is Greg, and see if he'll come in at the next meeting, possibly.
That would be awesome, if possible. All right. Any further comments, questions from the board? Okay. That moves us on to the other old business that's not on the agenda that Dana wanted to insert.
Yes. That was the, we met with Hockington, as I mentioned. They were speaking about the calculation for the twenty-five ambulance cost, which they say they are short thirty-seven thousand dollars. And they asked. And they asked if the town might consider helping them out. They're not talking about the whole thirty-seven thousand. They went down with the budget. They gave us what they're getting for revenue. I don't know what happened with the prior calculations. However, these calculations do look correct. And I can see where they're in a, between a rock and a hard place. So Webster, they underbilled thirty-seven thousand two sixty. Warner, almost ninety thousand dollars. They underbilled. So that made me look and see where we could find anything if you considered that, if you were to consider doing that. I do have in the encumbrances. We encumbered twelve thousand dollars for health insurance that I haven't used yet. I could pay future health bills out of the encumbrances, which would free up twelve thousand dollars. We also have, the only other thing we have is the contingency, which is eighteen thousand dollars.
So. Let me make sure that my understanding of this is correct. They gave us a number that they've been giving us forever. They put that number in their budget and gave it to us during their budget so that we could solidify it, put it in our budget that was voted on by the voters. When we asked to make sure that we had an actual signed contract, they actually noticed that, oh, we're not doing this right. And so now they're saying, please give us more. But they don't want to wait until the budget season when that would be fiscally normal and possible.
May I have the moment?
Is that my?
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, I was, I was just going to say is, I think there's a couple of factors and you're not completely wrong. One of the factors is they have a new administrator. And I think that when the new administrator took a look at this, and yes, of course, we mentioned the budget, I mean, the contract. And, and that brought it to people's attention. But they have a new administrator. When she went and did her calculations, she found that they had been underbilling, not only us, but Warner. I think they are very understanding that if we said, no, you know, we've got, we've planned on this. And, and I also, when you're given a number, you base your budget on it and you're not expecting to, to have to do more. If it were something, and I guess I'm just not really promoting one way or another, but I do think we have a very good relationship with Hockington. And they do give us a good service and frankly, we need it.
They did not get, again, hope you understand, they did not get pushing with us in any way. I'm using that term very, it's probably a better term, you're very, very advocating of us and our relationships. Expenses have gone up thirty-seven thousand dollars and I'm, I'm not even gonna tell you how to cook rescue charges and there's people here that can't. Salisbury. We're doing very well with Warner. We've got a great relationship with him. I've heard Emmett, the chief, talk about it. Do we have to pay them? No, but we owe them some money. And I think we as, we as leadership of this community, and I mean that sincerely, need to think about how we can do that. Protect our budget, which they're allowing us to do. Trust in Dana that he knows where some of that money can come from. Dave, I, I get, you know, the citizen stood here and spoke to it. We have a responsibility.
Absolutely.
And I don't mean that in any defense of anything I'm saying to you. This thing should have been taken care of seven, eight, ten years ago. It wasn't. And I'm not blaming anybody for that. Hockington went the same way with it. It wasn't a signature on any paper. So nobody can really say, gee, I knew the totality of this situation. So let's just leave that at that, if you know what I'm saying. But we have a great relationship, so.
I'll go ahead and recognize the public. Just state your name, please.
My name's Matt Rowley, resident of the, the town of Webster. Just for a point of clarification, how much are we currently contracted with the town of Hockington for services?
For the annual ambulance contract, it's about that amount, thirty-seven thousand.
So for a point of clarification, prior to my current employment, I was a deputy chief of an ambulance service in the southwest corner of the state. Our service community is very similar in size to the town of Webster. Under the process that we used there, if I were to have bid out the services for this community very properly to what Hockington provided to us, that bid would have been in excess of a hundred thousand dollars every year, if not more. If you look at the modified actuarial study that the state produced last year as required by RSI and we'll be updating, again, average taxpayer burden is well north of a thousand fifteen hundred dollars per activation. So again, if you look at our volume, that bid again would be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. I think both the chair and select court clerk members' comments are both correct. The reality is that we are getting extreme bargaining for high quality level of service. There's validity to both sides. Well, they, they provided a number and the town, myself included, you know, voted to accept that number. There is however, the, the reality that we do get good service. And that really is in our best interest to sort of support maintaining that service. Cause I highly suspect and submit that if we were to be required to put that service out to bid today, we really, really would not like the numbers that come in, even if we could find someone available to provide that service. So, yeah, are we sort of outside the established process? Did we vote to approve a number and is thirty-seven thousand dollars a lot of money? Yes, it certainly is. But we're getting an absolute bargain right now, even out of the double of that, that cost. If the board were to move today to decline to make that payment, we're just delaying the inevitable. If they've read on their math and that's what they're finding based on their costs and their needs, we're gonna end up basing that, that bill. So it's either now or later. And I can tell you in the previous role, if we were dealing with a shortcoming, ultimately that does have to come back with the budget. So it's either accomplished in one budget year or the next and just in a deferred cost. So we're kind of up against it, just how the board chooses to, to kind of handle that obligation. But I can say we do get very good service and extreme bargaining right now.
I just want to make sure that, yeah, so this may, uh, this I believe was sometime in December. I think we only make one payment a year.
We have not paid anything.
Well, but like last year, we, we made one payment a year.
Yes, yes, and so probably was December.
What has been budgeted for at least since twenty-twenty-one is thirty-six thousand. We were told this year to budget thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty by them. So that's what's in the budget. And the previous year, what they billed us for was thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-four.
Coincidentally, that is the same figure that they're telling us they're short.
Maybe they forgot to subtract it.
Well, you know, I think another thing in the discussion, nobody started pointing fingers, even anybody, or trying to find a blame. And I don't think, let's not go back, my favorite statement, let's not go back in time. We, we have a responsibility and that, with his experience and background and training, makes it much more, you know, I, and we've got a whole nother caveat we're gonna have to start looking at too. And that's Dana, I think is probably talking about that. That's the, the new ambulance billing rules, the IRS says. And that might be for a better, another time, you know what I'm saying?
Also.
So how much money did you say you kind of found that we would, might build to apply to again?
Well, I think the, the most that we could possibly do would be eighteen from the contingency and twelve from the insurance, so thirty thousand. I would recommend you not go that high.
So.
If you decide to do this.
Let me ask.
I think they'd be very appreciative of somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
Let me ask two conceptual bits here. One, since this is also Warner, do we know anything about what Warner is expected to do? Either from Warner or Hockington?
I don't know. I know that from the paperwork that I have, that they're asked, going to be asking Warner for their help as well. And, but I don't know what the results of that has been. I don't know if they've met with.
And, and so what did you say the total number was for what ours was supposed to be?
How much do we owe them and they're saying right now?
No, no, the total, the total, not the.
The total that we have.
They're saying that a year costs how much for us?
Well, based on, I don't know if I have it written like that.
Well, the, the, what, what they were charging us plus the new amount is what you're asking.
You mean what the new bill would be?
Yeah. Is that what you're asking?
Be just under eighty thousand or seventy-six thousand.
Okay, yeah. So.
And I wouldn't be surprised at all if next year's figure is eighty thousand.
Yeah, I, I have a, a thought there that I, I want to go with and then I'll bring it back up to, to the public again. Something that would seem to be reasonably fair to me would be that we are getting this and knowing about it now and we're gonna have October, November, December going up. And would basically be to per-rate the two values of what they're expecting our next years to be. And use that for the, the figure that they're saying it should have been and what it, what it should be going forward. To per-rate that and use that for the last three months. And to use what they had told us previously was the accurate amount for the first nine months that we've already been through. That would seem like a pretty easy thing for us to consider and should be able to be, I think, done fully in the contingency fund?
So I'm, I'm not sure if I'm quite following Dave.
So for example, they, they, they told us thirty-seven two sixty when we were budgeting. So divide it by twelve, use it for the first, first nine months. And then whatever their figure is that they're giving us for the new accurate numbers for this year and the upcoming year.
They haven't given us figures for the upcoming year. So that, that's one of my missing links.
So if they could do that and or if it's expected to be the same or approximately the same, we could base next years on the last three months based on that to come up with a, a number that's in the middle and we could. I would believe that the amount that that would change would be fully covered in the contingency fund. And we'd have to, of course, calculate it, but that's, that's my thinking as a possible kind of middle ground.
So what you're saying is taking, taking thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Divide that by twelve, so we're. Okay, so then take the number that they gave or we get the number that they gave for what this year would have been had we have.
Divide that by twelve and use it for that.
And pay for the three months of that, calculated on that number.
That, that seems a perfectly reasonable thing because we're now being informed of a new rate. And that would be some, some way that we could do it and help them. Not saying that we should definitely do that, but that's, that's my initial thought.
And again, they weren't pushing, they weren't pushing, they were very nice and we've got a great relationship, but you know, I, I can't, I can't reinforce that enough. It can't be without an ambulance.
And I, I want to keep that relationship. I want to show the good faith. I also don't just want to suddenly tell everybody, hey, we're paying you forty grand more this year than we didn't budget for.
But I can see this side of it too.
Absolutely.
And I, I think you can, but I can't.
I have to agree with Matt. You know, we, we've had a really wonderful with Hockington. You know, in all the years we've dealt with Hockington. In the past, Hockington did one portion of the town. Penna Cook Rescue did another portion of the town. We paid two separate entities, you know, we contracted with two separate entities. We went with Hockington. You know, we, we don't want to destroy our relationship with them. We have to help them out if we want to keep that service. I know Penna Cook Rescue has been here fourteen times. Hockington is being stretched also. You know, their paramedic service, they're, they're compensating them because they can go get a job someplace else. They have to. It, it's, it's life now. It, it really is. They're asking for the thirty-seven thousand. If you can do it, great. You know, uh, I was not here at the annual meeting, but there was a gentleman that got up and mentioned that this was in the future.
Yes.
And it was. And it's not just here. It's right across the board. So don't destroy our relationship with Hockington. Help them out as much as we possibly can. And I believe the citizens of the town will understand when they see that portion of the budget is doubled, because you will be questioned on it.
Oh, yeah. And we'll be able to.
You'll be able to justify it.
Explain that, that, that in the future budget.
I mean, when you look at costs, it's, it's a drop in the bucket. I mean, it's, and we've got, you look, the side of that is, and I, I don't know what I'm not questioning, but are we charging now? Chief is here and I'll ask. Are we charging now when our ambulance goes out, Hockington responds? Do we also put in an insurance charge for that so we get some reimbursement? And then again, I think, go ahead.
Um, we are not permitted to do so. Very, very long story. We could talk about a whole class about EMS billing and everything else, but the, the long and the short of it is generally speaking, most insurance companies, Medicare and Medicaid, pay based on transportation services provided.
That's the question I'm asking.
Yeah, Medicare specifically precludes anyone except the service actively delivering the patient to a qualifying facility from submitting a, a bill to the insurance companies. Our only recourse, if we wanted to do that, would be to bill the patient directly and it would be non-eligible for reimbursement. That is a tough road to go down.
No, I'm hearing you. That's, thank you for clarifying. So I did not have the answer to that question, so thank you. I don't think we did, did we, man?
So, so the, just to clarify again and make sure I'm understanding. The only way that we bill is if we transport.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and because of everything that's going on, our, our ambulance is still licensed to transport, isn't it? You know, I believe we have to keep that. We have to have that in town. Because Hockington's going to Warner a lot. Their, their numbers of calls have gone up. Penna Cook Rescue's, uh, you know, we're thinking of putting a second ambulance in service there. We may not get another one, and if we have the personnel in town that can do it, they do the transport and then we can bill.
Well, I think as we look towards the future, I'm not the fire chief, I'm not trying to speak rudely. We look toward the future, I think we're gonna have to start thinking about transport.
Well.
And, and you know.
That's another whole ball of wax.
That's a huge conversation.
That, that's a big conversation.
Yeah, well, I get, but I mean, I don't mean primarily. I'm saying secondarily or two ambulances are tied up and you put in a situation.
Yeah.
That's my, what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
But I, I, you know, in discussion, I tend to agree with you, Roy. I do agree. I don't want to cut this relationship and I don't want them to think we're nickel and diamond.
Yep.
I mean, it was a great conversation. Dana did a nice job with it. We both worked together and we didn't, you know, we didn't have, you know, there was, there was no back and forth. It was a very good conversation. I, I think we need to maintain a relationship. I would offer as a board member, we pay the thirty-seven, but I have two colleagues here and I.
Dave, what was that, what would be the total of what you just said? Cause you know, you like to do that crazy math in your head.
I didn't do it in my head, but give me a second and I'll open that back up. I don't know what the new, new total number is.
That's what we.
I'm sorry, we paid the, we paid the total.
Did you get the numbers of, of the stuff for it?
I just came with a rough number, not knowing what the new figure is going to be. So I based it on eighty.
Okay.
I based it on eighty and I came out with, and I think, I think I did it right, but I divided eighty by twelve times three. For three months.
Forty-three thousand. Forty-three thousand.
And that was, I got, I came up with a total of nine thousand dollars at the end.
So, it would be an extra nine thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, and that would definitely follow the contingency fund.
And I did that by, I also took what we had planned on, and deducted what we're paying per month now, if you will.
I'm not understanding.
Is that what you wanted me to do?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not understanding, what, what, they said, I don't know why, I'm, I'm confused, the eighty, well, I just wanna make sure I got the right numbers, eighty, eighty thousand, where is that?
That's the figure that we don't know, really, for sure.
Right, right, that's the one that came up.
So, we're thinking probably based on what we do know, so here, which I would have to check with her to see if I get a better number.
So, we would take thirty-seven from eighty...
Right.
Which we're paying, we come up with forty-three thousand.
Right.
So, it would be approximately twenty thousand for the last...
Yeah, twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Okay. Yes?
I just was doing some rough math, so if we figure on eighty thousand dollars for the twelve months, that's sixty, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars per month, with what we average for calls per month, we're averaging eighteen calls with medical and fire, probably seventy-five percent of those are medical calls, comes down to about five hundred and fifty dollars per call, that we get paramedic service, that's pretty cheap.
Mm-hmm. And that's a, and that's a great way to, to present for the budget portion at Town Unit.
Yeah, get it down to the nitty gritty.
But as far as now...
Now, wouldn't they come up with this number, I'm just curious, or anything, but they, they get reimbursed from Medicare, or, or, or insurance, maybe?
They do get reimbursed from the insurance company, and the other part of this is that starting January first, there is a new law coming to effect, and I, I can't explain to the insurance law, but they're not gonna get reimbursed as much as what, as what they told us. They told us that last year, wait a minute, this is, yeah, last year, twenty-four, we had three hundred and eighty-five requests for service. So, basically, out of their total calls, we're twelve percent, or just under thirteen percent. Their budget that they're trying to make up that's not covered by insurance and other revenues is about two hundred and eighty thousand, this is based on...
So, the, i- is it that their revenues did not match their expectation, is it that they're spending more because they're sending out more often, or is it just that, or is it purely that they didn't do the math on the contract and they've just been budgeting for it and don't wanna have to tax their people?
I believe that's what it is.
Okay.
I don't know for sure, I didn't, we didn't get into what the problem was, but...
I'm just trying to understand it further.
But, but I believe that it was a miscalculation that had started a number of years ago and has never been corrected.
Okay.
They, you also have to look into the fact that when they build Medicare, and we'll say if they build Medicare a hundred dollars, I'm picking an easy number, they might only get seventy-five percent of that, so they're, they're losing money there. Now, if you don't have, what, forty?
Forty percent.
Yeah, so, it, if the person doesn't have Medicare, they may have a private insurance, or they don't have insurance, so they're not getting reimbursed that way. We're in the same problem with Pennycook Rescue, you know, we, it's trying to balance the figures, and you say, okay, we're gonna get this, this is how much we anticipate if we had a thousand runs this year, we should get this back. And all of a sudden, as Dana says, new rules go into effect, and you don't get your anticipated revenue, and you still have your overhead, you gotta pay for the equipment, you gotta pay for everything.
And salaries.
Yeah?
Yes.
So, I may know a guy who studied this and is his full-time job, just throwing it out there. The reality is that reimbursements over the last fifteen years have essentially stayed almost flatline relative to what the ambulances are receiving. Operating costs have increased exponentially, just as sort of a point of, of example, in the, the previous role, I ordered a demo ambulance, something that was bone stock, ready to be delivered. The full-up delivery for that unit back in, like, two thousand and twenty or so was about twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was ready to go with the most state-of-the-art power load and power stretcher, every dollar was you, you could buy on that unit, but about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we received that vehicle within six to nine months of placing that, that order. Now, the bill time average is two to three years, and the statewide average for a comparable piece of equipment is over five hundred thousand dollars. And just to put that all in perspective, hands down, the number-one cost for a EMS unit has nothing to do with equipment, it's personnel and operating costs. So, they've seen a near doubling, if not larger, in fixed costs while the personnel costs are increasing exponentially. So, I have no doubt that a portion of this dynamic is a calculation and sort of a mathematical error, but the real driver behind a lot of these increases, and in all reality, they probably should have increased this years ago, are those declining reimbursements and the significantly increasing operating costs. I gotta tell ya, I sat in the, the contracting EMS agencies, seen a number of these budget hearings over the, the previous ten years, and the standing joke, but it wasn't a joke, is, you know, at, at the time, I was driving a ten-year-old truck, I was not coming to these meetings in a, a Maserati, and I was hoping really to, to live long enough to, to retire, so no one is getting rich there, they're not looking to, to line their, their pockets, they're really just trying to make sure that they're able to provide that, that service, 'cause those costs are spiraling, just like everything else we see, you guys are dealing here with the town, from schools to utilities to your website costs, I mean, it's just all going through the roof. So, I suspect that the answer to your, to the question, it's a little bit everything, sounds like they had a pretty serious math error in how they were handling the billing, but probably, sounds like they probably should have caught that a few years earlier, and this would have been a couple of conversations four or five years ago.
So, could we as a team, beyond the fact we need to kind of follow Dana's lead and pay them twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars so we keep the relationship sound, and deal with it that way? My recommendation would be that, and maybe that's not even enough, I don't know, I guess we need some help with that math, but, you know, it's, it's responsibility we have, I'm not gonna shirk the responsibility, and I know you two, I need, it's just, I, I think we need to keep, keep this as whole in this weekend.
I'm gonna be quiet for a second, 'cause I've talked a lot, and I haven't heard too much from you, so I wanna make sure you can chime in.
I get all kinds of, I, I got the Yankee in me, they'd be happy with half, I can't help it, you know, and it, in business, we've all, we've all had issues where you, you've underestimated, or, you know, I think, I do think something for sure, and, you know, and, and, and I think they're being very, I think they'd be very happy, and what I'm hearing from you, but I was not there with, with giving them something of a half to maybe a little more.
I think they didn't come to us expecting us to give them the entire amount, they understand how budgets work, and they're in the same situation. And I think if we gave them, I think they'd be very happy with whatever we gave them.
You know, we're gonna have to explain this to the taxpayers, but I like the, moving forward, cost is well explained, our fire professionals have explained it, I mean, you know, the bottom line is, if you want an ambulance and need an ambulance, you gotta have, and you gotta have good people behind it, and we've got, we've got all of that on both sides, and, you know, both sides of the town line, so I, I, I just don't want us to, you know, rock that boat.
So, is what you're suggesting, does your mind working with the budget numbers, what we would be nine thousand dollars from October, November, December, each month, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm, um, and again, I just did this on the fly, and I don't like to do things like that, but I'm coming with that method, using a figure that I'm not really sure if that's the figure or not, that, using that scenario, it would be about nine thousand dollars per month.
Per month.
Pay them, no, it would be, per month, it would be sixty-six, sixty-six.
Using the, using the formula...
And then, I'm taking away what we've budgeted for, and multiplied that by three, so that may come in to nine.
Yeah, so we had budgeted the thirty-seven, they rounded up to thirty-eight, did the division, so it would have been, we would have paid twenty-eight thousand, five hundred for the first nine, and it would be twenty thousand for the last three, for a total of forty-eight thousand, five hundred would have been if we were doing that nine months as budgeted and given to us, three months is now given to us. And so, that's, that's that number, and the thirty-seven were, and change, so it's about eleven grand more than what we had budgeted for if we were to do it.
A total of eleven, though.
If we were to do it, that, it would be about eleven grand overdrawn on that line, or coming out of the contingency fund.
And how, and was short how much?
Contingency fund is approximately eighteen grand, and the, and maybe Dana has the specific figure, but...
Eighteen-two-seventy-nine is the contingency.
And we haven't used it for anything yet, have we?
We have not used it.
Okay, and then...
Of course, the minute we did, something else would happen.
It was thirty-seven and change that they, that they said they were short?
Thirty-seven-two-sixty.
Okay, which is the amount that we had budgeted, so...
Coincidentally, same amount we budgeted this year.
Yeah, so...
What happens if we gave them twenty-five, which would bring us closer to a, in my mind, a number I don't like to see, just to ask.
The way that I could see that that would make some sense to do would be if we could overdraw the budget line item some and use the contingency fund. I, I know that Dana had mentioned that he had some encumbrances for other stuff, but the encumbrances are supposed to be for a specific payment and a specific thing.
Oh, I couldn't, I don't mean, I wouldn't use the encumbrance for this, I would just, for example, the health insurance, rather than charge the budget.
Oh, gotcha.
Um, I would pay the health insurance. Encumbrances, since I'm not in an issue with the health budget, I like to leave the encumbrances so it goes back into the fund balance at the end of the year, 'cause that's where it would go, because I also am Yankee.
Well, can I... Let me float this idea, we've got about eighteen-two in our contingency fund, we wanna make sure that we don't absolutely need the contingency fund for something, but what if we used the contingency fund amount at the end of the year to them?
Can, can I ask a question of our professionals in the audience? Gentlemen, I think it's important in this matter that you give us some feedback, what do you feel is fair?
My biggest concern is whatever we don't pay them this year is gonna be taxed on the next year's bill, so, 'cause they're gonna make up the shortfall somewhere. So, if we only pay them twenty-five thousand this year, we'll look at another ten, eleven thousand dollars on next year's, on top of the eighties, so you're now, you're looking at nineties at one thousand.
That was my thought.
So, I appreciate the, I mean, I think it's important to have fire department input in these things.
So, that being said, so if next year, say, we're ninety-five thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars to make up what we don't pay, they're gonna want their money one way or the other, let's face it. So, now, instead of going fifty percent, you're going a little bit more than fifty percent that you're gonna take to the taxpayers for a year, and then it might go down, or they'll say, well, they paid a hundred thousand this year, well, why won't they pay a hundred thousand next year?
Well, the contingency would actually be a little bit over it, over half of what they're suggesting is what they want. The, there is a formula for how this gets done, as opposed to just they're gonna charge us the back amount, but again, that's probably gonna change anyway because of the new laws, but I don't, the details of how that's gonna change, just...
Obviously, we know they're going to be much more careful calculating.
Right. But I, I...
Roy, you look like you wanna say something.
Well, I, I have to agree with him, it's pay this year or get a tack, tack on next year, or, or you gotta figure out, talk to them and find out as of next year what it's gonna be. Get it etched in stone, is it gonna be eighty grand, or is it gonna be a hundred and ten, and then... And if they're gonna provide the service, I'm wondering, I, I, I haven't got the answer for it, but my question is, how many calls in Hopkinton have they missed while they've been out of town? They have, correct me if I'm wrong, they still only staff one ambulance, and it's tough for them getting a second one out the door, that's why we've had mutual aid come in. You know, if I was a Hopkinton resident, I'd be ripped.
Because Concord comes up, ambulance four comes up to cover when they're here in Hennecker, Hennecker, Hennecker is in Hopkinton all the time.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm afraid that we're gonna lose a service.
Make sure I'm seeing this clearly, is Pennycook Rescue our backup if the Hopkinton ambulance can't respond?
It's one of them.
Okay, so, let me ask this question.
But Concord's been here, too.
No, no, I, I, I know, I, everybody works together, I get that totally. All I'm asking is, are we gonna start seeing requests from Pennycook Rescue for payments?
They do the billing, if they come and pick Matt up, they bill him.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just, just trying to get it straight.
Right now, right now, that's, that's not being discussed, but it could be down the road.
Right.
Because I know Pennycook Rescue, we're looking at possibly trying to staff a second ambulance, because we are missing second calls also.
Well, the business is there.
The business is there.
Same, same.
And, and you need, you need the personnel, and in order to get the personnel, you gotta pay the personnel.
And we have a large senior citizen community here, and that's some of my big concerns, and children, go ahead.
Uh, just to sort of clarify, from a statewide perspective, we can anticipate volume increasing, New Hampshire's in the top five nationally as far as percentage of our population that is age sixty-five or older, there is a strong correlation between call volume and age, there's also, again, nationally, a significant trend toward those over age sixty-five to be sicker, to have multiple comorbidities, so again, as people get sicker, we see an increase in volume, that is actively occurring even as we speak, we are all getting older and sicker, sometimes I feel that more days than, than others, but that is happening.
Me, too.
What is also happening is, the EMS system as currently designed, really was not built to really address these issues, it was heavily focused on providing a transportation service, our current reimbursement models are limited to, as I stated earlier, models that pay for physical transport of the, the patient to a destination, where we know that a significant portion of the cost in the care is provided with or without transport, that is actively being addressed at the state level, one of the things that they did was pass a reimbursement bill this last time around that the government just passed, that flips the, the payment for a lot of patients to about three hundred and twenty-five percent of Medicare base. The caveat to that is a lot of what's been discussed here is precluded, there will be no such thing as balance billing, where if the patient doesn't pay, we would submit a bill for the remainder, and they'd be obligated to pay, that would be forbidden, so we're gonna see what that looks like over the next two years. Part of that bill did require actual aerial studies to really look at what the, you know, reimbursement looks like, what the operational costs are, so that's all still pending. All of that really combines to show that the system is really, really stressed, Pennycook Rescue coming here, Hopkinton going, Hennecker, Hennecker coming into Hopkinton, Concord coming here, Hopkinton and Hennecker and Pennycook going into Concord, that is occurring more and more frequently, and that's not just here in the Capitol region, that is statewide. So, there are some places that are beginning to submit bills for mutual aid service, I'm not aware of that, you know, regionally, that's been discussed here, but it has occurred, it's really why it's in our best interest to sort of support our current contracted service, 'cause there's not a lot of options out there, and just as a sort of point of clarification, no one in the state of New Hampshire by law is required to provide ambulance service. Based on whatever contract we have with Hopkinton, they could decide to pull the plug, and we could be left without the ambulance service and struggling to find... Based on whatever contract we have with Hopkinton, they could decide to pull the plug, and we could be left without the ambulance service and struggling to find a contract. And that has occurred here in the state of New Hampshire, and is a real concern. As a volunteer here in town, I can't commit to being available to, to provide that level of service. It's a big jump for us to go from a non-transport service to actively transporting patients to Concord, I've had conversations with, you know, Emmett and Jake, the reality for me is, I feel all the same impacts every other taxpayer in town does, I have small children in the schools, my family is really focusing on performing activities that keep the roof over our head, the taxes pay the food on the table, so asking us to potentially pick up that transport volume may not be a viable option. Our best bet is really to continue to work with our current partners and make sure that they stay strong, otherwise, we may find ourselves in a really, really bad spot.
Well, that's why I appreciate your support, your background, and all of you speaking to it, I mean, I, I'm not a firefighter, so I can't speak to those things you've spoken to. I think that's, it's very important to support that, so, that's where I stand, and again, I'm not trying to be adversarial with my colleagues here, I'm, I'm just, I fall off my roof, I'm going, I'm going to permit you.
I think it's, I'm encouraged with the way the conversation's gone, because I think it's important that we show some sort of support to, to our partner, they're our partners. The reality is, we have X amount of money.
Right.
And, and so, I don't think we can really go with more money than we have. So, could we do twenty-five thousand? Yes. Could we do much more than that? No.
I am going to look for support of my two colleagues here this evening for the twenty-five thousand, I think I'm hearing it from public safety colleagues in the audience, maybe I'm not, but I think I am, but I think we owe a support factor to our, our folks who readily come here for us. We're doing well with Pennycrook Rescue, because they're doing the billing, we have supportive of us, and that's backup, so I think we're in good shape there with what I'm hearing. So, I, I would, I would ask as a board member, and seeing this responsibility, we support our fire department and the fire department, but, again, that's just John Clark, come on.
I mean, it's going to show good faith, and hopefully, they remember that next year, or they don't. You know, you're right, I mean, they're going to find a way to collect it.
I think Jake has a very good point.
Oh, right.
I respect Jake greatly, but I hope you're wrong, but you might not. I hope we're wrong too.
I think the real thing here is that we all understand and want to be supportive. The, the thing that makes it hard for me to say yes to the tw- extra twenty-five is that we don't actually have that much, you know, contingency fund.
That's right.
Because the extra can come in.
Whereas I would be saying, it's, like, I'm completely fine with maxing out what we budgeted for the budget line item, maybe going over a little bit, and then using the contingency fund, because it's one of the, like, this is a contingency, it's not something that anybody expected in either town. So, to me, that makes sense. And, as, as a taxpayer and as someone telling people, hey, you're going to pay more, then that's something that's defensible, and that's why we have things like contingency funds to be able to cover this, but also to limit how much we can save. You, you have to do it. So, that's just my thinking in my head, if both of you want to do twenty-five, I'm sure Dana can find a way to do that, but...
How much is your total, what do you think?
The... So, if they're, well, they haven't actually given us a bill for this year.
No, they haven't.
But the number that they gave us, if that's our, our budget, we'll say that that's there, and then the extra amount that's in the contingency fund is eighteen-two seventy-nine, so if we overran the budget line item, it made it even twenty?
Okay, I'm, I'm, as they say, I'm a team member, I'll work with you on that when I go to twenty, how do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're throwing a ball over the edge, hoping we can catch it.
Well...
You know, but we have the money there, I, I guess I don't, I mean...
Because that's not like a huge overrun in the, in the budget line item, and we have the contingency fund, and so that's a defensible use of the money. Whereas trying to take it from other places, move it from other line items for something that wasn't budgeted for is more risky and more, to try and explain and defend to the general public.
I think you've explained it well, gentlemen, you?
I think that is a reasonable approach, and nobody said it, but I think we're all thinking it with the caveat that there is a very clear explanation to that community that just can't happen, that it needs to be addressed next year, that the figure that is provided to the, the town administrator needs to be the figure that is provided, so we can do our due diligence and budget appropriately, so, we can help you this year, but...
I would assume at town meeting, you all will be there to support.
Do the best they can.
Okay.
In the back row.
You know what I'm trying to say, I mean, they're, they're, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not one of these deals, you know, it's, it is what it is, like, all same.
So, how, how does that move forward, because it doesn't, would that be a motion, or is it a, we've come to a consensus of X?
Well...
Because they haven't billed us.
You're going to have to have a motion to withdraw from the contingency fund.
Okay.
And if you're, if you're saying twenty thousand and then the remaining...
Well, it would be the eighteen hundred or whatever.
Yeah. Would be coming out of the budget line, which eventually would show as overdrawn.
Correct.
Which, as you know, as I've always said, I'd like, would rather have it show overdrawn, because you can, you then will know why it is.
Right, we're doing this in a staggered payment, right?
However...
No, it's one, theoretically, it's one one.
Okay, just, I'm just trying to get a feel for what you're trying to mean.
But I would need a, a motion to withdraw, and if you can see what the amount of interest you want to take out of the contingency.
Go around the...
If you're going to go with the eighteen-two seventy-nine, or...
That would be draining it.
That would, that would drain it.
And when they tip, when do we typically get that bill each year?
Usually, we get it in December.
December.
Yeah.
So, the...
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
You made a good point. You would go back, and we talked about this the other day, that you and the town administrator down there are going to be the negotiators for this. How about you go back and say, this is what we're willing to send, what we really would appreciate a bill under this number if we could do it this year, now it might bounce back exactly to what Jake is saying, he might try to make it up, but I, I put trust in Hopkinton, I don't think, from our conversation with them, again, you might be fully correct. I don't think they're going to try to do that, I think they're going to have an anticipation for what we owe as to what they told us, and not tack a ten to twenty thousand dollars onto it. I hope.
Yeah, I'm sure it wasn't fun for them to come to us and tell us that they had this problem.
I mean, we were the ones that went to them, you know?
Yeah. We opened that can of worms.
Well, we didn't have a choice. You know, I'm, again, we're not going back in time, we're pointing fingers.
So, yeah, what if we want to take out a contingency, if you would vote for that, and then the remainder, I'll just hit the ambulance account?
So, here's my question for that, do we, do we actually make the motion to do that now, or do we do it when the bill comes and we're paying it?
If you'd rather wait, you can do that, I would tell them that we would pay them in December, we could give them the extra in December, I don't think they would mind that. And Theresa and I watch in our bank account very closely, so that would be a good idea.
Yeah, so I, I would...
Don't take it now.
I would suggest for the concept of...
Do you see where Matt put him?
Of all of us giving direction to Dana, that you should talk with them and see how they feel about, A, doing it as a payment all at once in December like normal, and B, the extra amount being that, being the twenty K, provided that we, A, have the amount in the budget at the end and/or in the contingency fund. Because who knows if we have to, like, there's some real emergency right now that needs the contingency fund in the end of November or something, but...
Okay, well, you know you don't have the money in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we don't have the money in the line item for the budget. We often end up with some overall for the bottom.
Right, right.
But i- if we know, if we frame it that this is what we're thinking and we'd like to do, provided that our contingency fund and overall budget fund will allow it, see how that goes, is that fair for a general consensus?
That's a real, I think that's a great approach.
And then, when the time comes, you can give us the motion to take out of contingency.
All right.
That way, we're still able to be contingent like it's intended as long as possible, and don't make our cash flow worse in, in the meantime.
Right.
All right, any further comments on that or thoughts?
Nope.
Okay.
I have one other comment by my...
Yes.
I think you've used a limit.
I think I met my limit. The, I spoke with Karen, who is the administrator, about the ambulance service agreement, and I would like to work with Emmett, and she would like to work with Jeff Yale to come up with an agreement, and I think it's, as we go, it depends how complicated it gets, but we will need help towards the end of that, but I would like to give you something enframed at some point, as soon as we can do that, in Emmett's spare time.
I, I thought we had a, I thought that's what you guys were working on and where these numbers came from.
No, the numbers came from the budget, from me working on the budget, not from the agreement.
I think what you're trying to say is, is operational fact is probably in the new agreement should be in.
Yeah, but it wa- it's not there though.
Gotcha. Okay. Yes, so please work with them, and that agreement would, of course, guide how the budget numbers show up for when we're doing budgeting.
That would be a good idea, wouldn't it?
So, yes, then we can have all of that in one place.
I'm just trying to give you an update of what's, what our plans are.
Okay. So, that, I...
I am done.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for the compassionate discussion.
Do you want me to leave?
So, that brings us to our new business, the utility assessment.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm hearing him again.
And we hire somebody that does this, right?
Yes.
I mean, we pay like, what, ten thousand dollars a year?
Ten thousand eight seventy-five. Okay. And now I'm all discomplu- but I'm going to find it. The utility figures came in lower than what I would have liked.
When all of a sudden, everybody else's land's worth a lot more, but theirs isn't?
Here we go.
Their stuff depreciates all the time, on a schedule.
And it, and it was caused by utilities not making any further investment in their infrastructure, this is the explanation of that. Plus depreciation.
They haven't made any in their infrastructure?
Well...
What's all this stuff on the side of the road happening?
I don't know anything about the side of the road, Marlowe.
So, so TDSs has gone up a little bit, and they're the ones that own the poles, and you've seen pole replacements and stuff. All of the...
Maybe it's different.
Any like extra or new lines or transformers and stuff, if that were to exist, that would then be, you know, Unitil or New England Power, or...
Eversource.
Eversource. And, but basically, all of the electric companies have gone down, and TDS has gone up, but of course, not as much, because they basically just own one line in the poles. The, and it's all done based on standard tables and depreciations and, and other such things. We do have arguably the top expert in the state doing this.
So, who are we to argue?
So...
This is Skip San Suci, right?
Correct, yes, he's, he's doing it since he was born.
And the second thing I'll state that I did see in here, which I was encouraged by, is that these numbers are to be used alongside the equalization rate, so, being that we will be at a rate that shows that our town is valued under what it would be at market value, this is reflecting that same amount, so when the multipliers happen with the state and the equalization amounts, it will happen here too, not just to the town. So, that helps, it's still a rather large chunk of the assessment that is less, but it is what it is.
Well, and I don't yet like to say we have really the premier assessor on this, and if he, if we need to have our values defended, he's just the guy that can do it, we just settled this public service case last year, and it looked very expensive.
So, what do we make as the motion that...
And this is a, an actual letter from them for the assessment update and the appraisal, and anyone who wants it should be able to get a copy of that from you, so... Do we need a motion to accept it, or is it just...
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's just information.
I'm going to be giving you one where it's reflected, so when you sign, you'll be...
You're comfortable with all of Skip's work here?
Oh, I'm very comfortable.
Yeah, I know you're comfortable with that.
It's nice to have someone looking at this.
I certainly don't know what he knows, let me put it that way.
No, he's very good at what he knows.
Okay, so that moves us to correspondence.
And you'll be happy to know I don't have any correspondence.
Okay, so that concludes the normal session, but, which brings us to public comment, any particular comments that you'd like to get out there?
Jim, what are you doing?
Thank you. That moves us to our motions and approvals.
We have a letter that Russ prepared. Should we sign?
Can I ask Liz a question?
No.
Sure.
I am seeing some traffic build up down at the bums' stand.
Yep.
And I see the signs down, those signs have to go back up, parking has to be in that drive-off.
I will talk to you about it.
I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
I had a little incident down there on Sunday where one car was pulling in, can't have it, park in the driveway, go after it.
Okay.
And again, just...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Rules are rules, you know?
Yep.
Well, all of those are recycled, eh?
It's probably just been sitting this way.
I know, I'm just kidding.
I have a motion for the trustee of trust funds.
Oh.
It's the end of the third quarter.
Yes. What is the next step on this?
So, this is the first step, so we're notifying them that we're aware of the issue. Hopefully, the person reaches out to me, if they don't, they get a second letter, if they don't after that, then usually we go to the town attorney.
Okay, I didn't know where you, I'm sorry, I didn't know where you were.
So, the first time, the first thing I did with this person is I had a casual phone conversation with them. I haven't seen any real substantial changes, even though they told me they would, so now I'm going to put them on notice with a formal letter.
Is every home on the other side of the street has done thousands of dollars in approval, and I fully understand the citizens' concern. And I fully understand the citizens' concern as to why this issue is not being addressed.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a letter to them at a different time previously?
I think that was for a different issue.
Okay.
This is the tolling service, right?
Right.
Well, we've been into this for years.
Yeah.
Let's see. There you go. Let's see here. Make sure that... So, I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents payable to the town of Webster to reimburse the town for expenses to be withdrawn from the capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds as listed. Five thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars from the police equipment capital reserve fund. Twenty-four thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents from the bridge and culvert capital reserve fund. Eighty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents from the highway and roads capital reserve fund. Ten thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars from the town hall capital reserve fund and fifty thousand from the emergency apparatus capital reserve fund. Again, that total, one hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Second half?
Yeah, if you're all comfortable with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have further signings or motions?
Yes, we do. I need you to sign the MS one on...
I also place sizable tonight.
Next to your name, if you would be so kind.
And this is our overall valuation, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Want me to tuck you in?
Getting there. Oh, man.
You can, if you like it. Oh, you mean Russell? I like what you meant, right?
So, the net valuation was listed as three hundred seventy-six thousand, oh, sorry, three hundred seventy-six million five hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars. That is what they believe our town is worth. Yep. I'll give mine another moment. I don't want to...
How much is the town worth?
Let me grab that number for you again. The net valuation was three hundred seventy-six million five hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars.
That makes sense. I was off a number. I was going to say the bridge was worth that.
Have we had anybody apply? I know this is a lame question.
Well, right now, I'm having trouble getting the add up. I'm talking to HME about it.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to repost it, and they're trying to help me get through some...
Maybe, maybe three years down the road, there may be an opening estimate.
Yeah. Working on it.
Just kidding.
Your first one?
Yeah. Close it.
Well, we'll plug her on as we can.
Is there a second signage here?
The only one I saw was on front.
Just on the front.
Okay, thank you.
It's usually the attestation. We've seen the form...
Twenty-second.
Russ, make sure it be what year he's putting.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's this year, but I got to call them.
I have Unitil bills that were paid. Excuse me. What kind of work?
Need an extra one? I got one.
Down at the, oh, there's a second page we'd sign on this too, right?
No, no, that's just the intent.
This is only, oh, this is the, okay.
I just remembered there was a...
This is the intent, so it's just one.
Who was it?
No, it was John Pearson or Josh Pearson.
Advocate Rockville.
No, it's coming.
That's for the Visa payment. And hit me both. I can believe our own documents.
Nice. Now I get to be made fun of for my minutes. I've already found out.
So, that's all of our signings and motions?
That's all you signed, so thank you.
Okay. So, that will bring us to the meeting minutes. I will note that I did not see any in my packet for the non-publics, so we can take those up at the next meeting. I don't know if they've made it into your packets or not, but...
No, I didn't. I got the non-public.
The...
I'm a terrible assistant.
You're terrible. I sent Russ a couple grammatical changes, but nothing of substance. Has everybody else had a chance to look through the minutes?
Yeah, I didn't see the spelling, so I'll shoot it.
Yeah, I know. I'm like, I'm always like, potent, you won't ever find me fixing any grammar or spelling.
All right. Any other comments on them?
Well, good.
All right, so I would move to accept the minutes as amended, well, for grammatical type of...
Yeah, we'll just do it as amended. It makes it easier to go do the changes that you saw.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that concludes our agenda. Is there anything further before we close?
Yeah, I would like to ask if you had a non-public meeting under, I guess, personnel.
And then I'm going to need another one under reputation.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, for...
Which of those might be for anybody that would be here currently?
The personnel one will be for, and I'm going to invite Emmett and Matt.
Okay. So, I would move that we enter into a non-public session under personnel at eight oh eight. Do I have a second?
Dave, second half.
And who calls?
Marlo Harris.
John Clark.
And Dave, all yes for that?
Yes, right. Got to say your name.